Welcome to the meeting of the Lennerdery School Board to be held on Tuesday, May ninth, two thousand twenty-three at seven P. M. at the Lennerdery High School, two ninety-five Mammoth Road, Lennerdery, New Hampshire, in the café. The meeting will also be broadcast on local cable, access channel twenty-one, as well as the district's YouTube channel. Could we all please rise, pledge allegiance?
Aye.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which is safe, one nation under God, indivisal, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We've got to take a few minutes, folks, and go into a non-public session. I'll ask for a motion to go into non-public session requested under RSA ninety-one A colon three, section two, aye.
So moved.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Amanda. Roll call vote. I'll start to my left with Kevin, please.
Aye, Kevin Gray.
Aye, Tim Porter.
Aye, Bob Slater.
Aye, Sarah Loveland.
Aye, Amanda Butcher.
Could I have a motion to come out of non-public, please?
So moved.
Motion by Sarah. Second.
Second.
Second by Tim. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're back into our general meeting. We're going to go through the consent agenda. We've got a couple of retirements. Ms. Tarr, could you read one? We'll start with that one.
Retirement of Joan Campo. I am privileged to share with you the retirement of Mrs. Joan Campo, Special Education Program Director at Lennerdery Middle School. Joan is a lifelong educator passionate about children, ensuring each child has a learning environment appropriate and designed to meet their needs. Joan began her career at Salem High School as a special education teacher and case manager, and after seven years moved to Woodbury Middle School in Salem as a special education coordinator. After nine years in Salem, she was offered a position in the Derry School Districts as the Assistant Director of Student Services and supervised two middle schools, the District Emotional Disturbed Program, and was the LEA for Pinkerton Academy. After serving nine years with the Derry School District, she took her expertise and skill set and joined the staff at Lennerdery Middle School. Having served the past ten years as a special education program director, Joan is well-known and respected for her ability to assist parents and support all those who work closely with children who receive special education services. Although her extensive education includes a degree in psychology and postgraduate work in language and learning disorders, her certifications include special education administration, specific learning disabilities, emotional behavior disorders, intellectual disabilities, and general special education and elementary education. Joan leaves the halls of LMS and will do what she loves most in life, and that is to spend time with her family. As a proud mother of four sons and a grandmother of nine beautiful grandchildren, her impact in the lives of many families in Lennerdery will be remembered for years. We are fortunate to have had the opportunity to have worked with such a professional, caring, and dedicated person that has enriched all our lives moving forward. On behalf of the Lennerdery School District, thank you and we wish you the best in your retirement.
Thank you, Sarah. Lynn Cannon, another. Tim, please.
Lynn Cannon has been a valued part of the Lennerdery School system for many years. She started out as a secretary at North School, but in two thousand two, she came to work as a secretary at Moose Hill and was pivotal in giving our new kindergarten preschool its wonderful start. When the need came, without hesitation, she moved on to becoming a special education assistant and classroom instructional assistant. This is where Mrs. Cannon truly shined. Her cheerful way with children, taking a sincere interest in their lives and what makes them happy helped her to guide them in their learning. Being a grandmother to Cameron and Emma has kept her in touch with the needs of young children, and this makes her a valued member of the kindergarten team. She develops strong relationships with the individual students she works with and has a great rapport with the students in her classrooms. After many years in these two roles, Mrs. Cannon's husband retired, and she in turn was ready to step back and enjoy a partial retirement. That year, she gave up her morning special education assistant position and was looking forward to relaxing with a cup of coffee before heading off to school. At that time, Moose Hill hired a new kindergarten teacher, and because she would need an assistant, Mrs. Cannon gave up her quiet mornings to spend time working with Mrs. Capanari and a new set of kindergarten students. This act of selflessness speaks volumes about the kind of person Lynn is and how she wants to make sure that our young students have the best possible start to their education. Mrs. Cannon was an integral part in helping to run an efficient classroom. She was kind, supportive, and made sure this new classroom had everything it needed from pencils to paintbrushes. She did this each morning while continuing to work in another kindergarten classroom in the afternoon. This year, instead of remaining in the classroom, she had been working in for the past three years. She again made a sacrifice and changed classrooms to help Ms. Edwards in her first year at Moose Hill. Again, she is always ready to do what she can to lend a hand, give support, and be there for students and teachers alike. Mrs. Cannon is such an amazing educator, coworker, and friend. Her kind, nurturing way with children and adults will be missed. We wish her all the best in her retirement and her continued job of being an amazing guide to Cameron and Emma. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Okay, moving on. Our upcoming meetings, May twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three, will be a regular meeting in the band room at seven P. M. On May thirty-first, we have the adult graduation in the Lennerdery High School gym at six P. M. June eighth will be the baccalaureate at Capital Center of Arts at seven P. M. June ninth is graduation at S N H U Arena at seven P. M. And June thirteenth will be again a regular meeting in the café at seven P. M. Moving on to announcements, presentations. I'd like to have a fifth grade Battle of the Books Elementary School presentation, please. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Kelly Sarbaugh, one of the reading specialists at Matthew Thornton. I'm just the first one to speak. I guess I'm the guinea pig. But I'm here to just kind of explain what Battle of the Books is. It started at North School several years ago, but is a program where, over the course of three months, we offer a series of about fifteen books to fifth graders. They choose whatever books they want to read. They can read as many or as few as they want, and their teacher places them in teams of four to five. And at the end of that period of time, the reading specialists come into the room and ask them questions about the books. So there's three rounds of questions, and each round, there's five questions, and they all begin, "In what book does?" and then we ask them a question. And they need to respond by giving us the title of the book and, if they can, the author. And then, at the end of each round, the points are totaled up, and we give them the scores for all the teams. And at the end of the three rounds, we let them know the winner. We have had situations where we've had to go into tiebreakers, and I know at our school, I've had to go through the tiebreakers, the classroom tiebreakers, the school tiebreakers, and almost going into the other tiebreakers so that I had to call my colleagues and say, "We need more tiebreaker questions," because I use them all, because our students were so into the books. They knew so much about the books that we just kept getting all the questions correct. We do look to add new books to the repertoire each time, rotating out some of the books that have been on the list for a number of years. We try to make sure that we have a variety of genres, from fiction and nonfiction. Also, we've added some graphic novels, and also a wide variety of difficulty, things that will appeal to students who like and need the challenge and to be enriched, and those that find reading to be a struggle, that they can also be engaged and want to be a part of Battle of the Books. One book is also done as a read aloud for the class, and that allows for class discussion as well. So I'm going to leave the prop here because somebody else is going to talk about when we use this, but who's up next?
Hi, I'm Judy Martin from South School, and I'm also one of the reading specialists. And thank you, everyone, for showing up today. So, as Kelly has told you how we get the teams formed, then after we get a classroom champion, we go to the school level. And so each classroom battles against them, and we end up with a school champion or a champion team, which is sitting in front of you, some of them today. And we know that springtime is busy and not all of them could make it. So we appreciate all of you. Thank you for coming out. So that's when it gets really exciting. So then, all the fifth graders get on buses from Matthew Thornton and North and South, and we all go to the middle school, which is a nice opportunity for all the kids to kind of get used to being at the middle school and seeing what it's like. And I have to say, our audience is wonderful. The kids do a really nice job sitting and supporting their fellow students. They wear their bling or their school pride shirts. They make signs. It's quite a big deal. And then, the three teams get together, and again, we battle, and the questions get really difficult at this level. So we're pretty impressed with the kids. And then, from the three rounds, we get a district champion. And this year, Matthew Thornton is our district champion. And yes, he did get the trophy, but don't worry, I think South School has a nice place for it next year.
Hi, I'm Danielle Bowers-Socks from North School. We always say that if we can get a student to read one more book than they would have normally read, then the battle was a success for us. But really, we are able to hook so many reluctant readers because we have such a wide variety of books, and we make sure that we have a really wide range of readability, like Kelly had previously said. You know, and it gives kids the chance who might not be super interested or strong in sports to just have a different strength where they get to shine. And then, for those readers who are already voracious readers, giving them a batch of fifteen new books to read is super motivating, and we oftentimes have those kids come back to us and say, "Mrs. Bowers-Socks or Mrs. Brown, I'm already reading the books for the second round to prep for the battle." So they really get into it that way. We also have kids who get involved in recommending books for the battle. So last year, we had a fourth grade boy who had read a graphic novel about how the national parks began, and he brought that book to us and said that he thought it would be a great book to add to the battle. And we did. We ended up adding that to our fourth grade battle. So he was just a superstar that he was involved in that. Mrs. Brown had a letter on her desk the beginning of this year. A fifth grade girl wrote a letter saying why a book she had just read should be a battle book. So they do get really involved in trying to help us pick books to keep things new and fresh. We've also had parents reach out to us and just thank us for exposing their kids to books that they wouldn't normally pick up and end up really enjoying, you know, whether it be learning about cultures they didn't know about, or reading about life challenges that kids their age have, or even just reading about the different personalities of the characters that they read about. And then, our teachers are also really supportive of the battle because, again, they have a whole new batch of books for their kids to read, both in school and at home. And oftentimes, they will connect it to the curriculum. So, you know, for example, if third grade is working on summarizing, they'll have those kids use their battle books to practice summarizing. So that's why we think the battle is so great.
All right, and would you guys like to introduce yourselves? Can we go down the line? Is this Matthew Thornton? All right, so if you want to introduce yourself, can we stand up, say your name, and maybe share what was the favorite battle book was?
My name is Aria Baldessberger, and I'm from Matthew Thornton, and my favorite book was probably Where the Mountain Meets the Moon.
My name's Genevieve Bostick, and my favorite book was The Red Pyramid.
My name's Levi Prue, and my favorite book was Ugly. We're all from Mrs. Memo's class.
Hi, my name is Blake Santello, and my favorite book was Dog Days.
Hi, my name is Mason Liang, and my favorite book was Germany, Thatcher, Dragon Hatcher.
My name is Emily Post, and my favorite book was Where the Mountain Meets the Moon.
My name is Royce Cologne, and my favorite book was Because of Mr. Terror.
My name's Greta Rolfe, and my favorite book was Dash.
Thank you so much. Great job. All right, we're going to move into five point two with the student data updates from K to twelve.
Good evening. So we're pleased to return to present data from the winter. Our administrative team felt that these updates for the board and community were important and that it was a better effort to digest information through each season with performance rather than wait the entire year and go through all. If you recall, we were here in the winter presenting the fall, so now we're back to present information from the winter at each
Yes. So looking at, just once again, when we were back here in the fall, our K through twelve focus areas this year continue to remain. Looking at math, K through twelve, phonics, K through three, literacy, K through five, social emotional learning, K through twelve, and portrait of a graduate, really everything building up to that K through twelve. On the next slide, just a reminder, these are our common data collection tools. We have a variety beyond this, but really, when we look at common collection tools, we have I Ready, grades one through eight, the SAT, the state test, the New Hampshire SAS, and the Common Formal Sumative Assessments amongst all grade levels.
So Nicole and I are here to present on the elementary schools, and we'll start with math. Once again, kind of giving you a highlight between the three schools and at each grade level. This is our overall placement with I Ready math, looking at our fall data in first grade, second grade, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, and then looking where we were this past winter with our on and early on grade level percentages. And you can see the change there. One thing to note is that's our overall placement. As you can bind down a little bit, there are four domains that we focus on or I Ready focuses on: Numbers and Operations, Algebra and Algebraic Thinking, Measurement, and Geometry. So you can see the change there. In the next slide, what we've done here is it shows the comparison and overall placement from winter when you look at two thousand twenty-two and you look at winter two thousand twenty-three. And then, we look at where we were when we ended the spring of last year to kind of show the anticipated growth for spring as we look at the trend from last year. And we look forward to the summer coming back and sharing where we ended up come this spring with our final I Ready diagnostic. Like I said, this chart reflects all four domains, and we have about sixty to seventy percent of our students on grade level despite the focus only being on two domains. So I Ready looks at, or tests on, or assesses on all four domains when we're really focusing on two. And I'll have Nicole kind of dive into those two specific domains.
Okay, so the first slide that you're going to see where we kind of dug a little deeper for you. So this slide, it teases out Numbers and Operations. So the first chart that you see shows the placement for Numbers and Operations, just the same comparison that Paul was talking about earlier. So our fall of two thousand twenty on an early on grade level percentage, and then our most current winter, two thousand twenty-three, on an early on grade level percentage just for Numbers and Operations, and then in the green, the change. The chart on the right, so the second chart, shows that same kind of breakdown that Paul mentioned earlier with the spring of two thousand twenty-two being in the middle, so where we ended up last year with Numbers and Operations, and then on either side of that, that winter of two thousand twenty-two and the winter of two thousand twenty-three, so our most recent. So to go back to what Paul said, so this kind of shows what we anticipate our growth will look like for Numbers and Operations, and if you see, that percentage does get a little higher with that spring diagnostic with this particular domain, which has been a real focus point for the last few years in the elementary school. So it just shows that that focus on that particular domain has really been working, and we're seeing higher percentages there with our kiddos. The next one is Algebra and Algebraic Thinking, which would be another domain that we've really put an emphasis on with our math programs. So you'll see the same chart in that left side will show the fall of two thousand twenty-two and then the winter of two thousand twenty-three, so our most recent diagnostic with just Algebra and Algebraic Thinking, and then the green showing the change. And then, the same chart on the right from the previous slide, that same idea. So just looking at that trend and seeing that spring of two thousand twenty-two where we ended up with Algebra and Algebraic Thinking, and then on either side of that, that winter comparison from the two diagnostics. So just looking at, it's very similar from the winter of two thousand twenty-two and the winter of two thousand twenty-three, so hoping for the same, that same anticipated growth in this domain as we go into our spring diagnostic, which will be starting next week, actually. So just kind of a little recap with math. So continued, so our summer math academy is back and up and ready to go for summer of two thousand twenty-three. We're really excited about that. We are continuing to work on pacing adjustments in Math and Focus two thousand twenty, really exciting. I know my first year here, so not really seeing the comparison from years past, but just with conversations with teachers on where we've been in the past and how we're ready to really move forward with our pacing, which will also allow us to get to those other two domains, have more exposure to that and more time for those with our kiddos. Continued with the thirty minutes of additional math added at all grade levels, targeted efforts to provide more exposure to measurement and geometry. We've been working really closely with curriculum associates who, they are the makers of I Ready, so we've been working with them on strategies on how to expose our kids to geometry and measurement, and then continued alignment and refinement of the curriculum and assessments and just, again, bridging all the three schools together and just aligning all of our math curriculum.
And now we switch over to the other side, reading. And so this, once again, is kind of looking at that global picture of where we are, reading between all three elementary schools, looking at where we were in the fall, looking at where we are in the winter. Once again, for I Ready and looking, there's really six domains to hone in on, and that's phonological awareness, phonics, high-frequency words, vocabulary, comprehension literature, and comprehension informational texts. And so you can see, when you look at the change in recognizing grade one, the jump happens really in the spring. So you can see, we go from thirteen percent to forty-six percent when you go to the next slide. And kind of hone in, you see the seventy-one percent and just that growth. And really, where we want to see our anticipated growth, or we expect our anticipated growth for the spring of two thousand twenty-three. This chart, once again, reflects all six domains, and we have currently sixty to eighty percent of our students on grade level without really a systematic or consistent curriculum. We are currently exploring some different curriculum options that do support all six domains and the science of reading, which we've been sharing with you. Currently, kindergarten through third grade, they're all using foundations, looking at the phonics, focusing on three domains. Our currently kindergarten through third grade, they're all using foundations, looking at the phonics focusing on three, three domains. And Nicole will kind of highlight those three specific ones.
Okay, so we did the same thing with reading that we did with math, but we really teased out three different areas. But one thing you'll notice right away is that you'll only see first and second grade because it's really where this, the grade levels that this applies to. Once we get to that third grade, a lot of our kiddos are testing out of these three domains. So it's not really, the data's not really valid, I guess I would say, in the sense that it doesn't really show them being exposed to this regularly in I Ready. So they're not really, it, it's not something that they're really being tested on, if that, if that makes sense. So this is placement in phonological awareness for first and second grade. So again, you'll see the same chart from, from math, so looking at that comparison to, so our change for fall of 2022 to winter of 2023, but then on the right side seeing that anticipated growth with spring with really looking at like eighty to ninety percent of our, of our kids in first and second grade on grade level for phonological awareness, which as Paul mentioned earlier, foundations is a huge, that's a huge driving force for this, having that program in, in these grade levels. So we're really seeing the benefit of that and seeing the growth there. On the next one, you'll see the same thing for phonics, which if we're looking like kind of moving up in grade levels as well, like those skills kind of build on each other. So you might notice that there might not be the same level of growth here, but it's, it's a skill that's continuing to build. So it gets a little bit, a little bit more challenging for the kiddos to kind of pull all those skills together. But again, you'll notice that we're still anticipating some really great growth there in the spring of 2022. I'm sorry, in the spring of 2023. And then the last chart is high frequency words. So one thing we just wanted to highlight here and same, again, same idea, you're going to see the change from fall to winter with the green there. And then you're gonna see the comparison of winter 2022 and winter 2023, our anticipated growth for the spring. The one thing we wanted to point out is that if you remember when we came and presented about curriculum and science of reading and where we were with that, one of the things we talked about was kind of transitioning to using trick words with our students and having kind of a different, taking a different approach to that. So this is basically, we're asking kids to really own words, so being able to read and spell rather than kind of that traditional either spelling test or that traditional just kind of like sight word really quick, like memorization of words. So that's something that we've made a shift in and we have seen just in the high frequency words domain that, that there has been an increase just from the winter 2022 to the winter 2023. So it'll be interesting to see if that pattern continues as we continue to implement more of the science of reading best practice and strategies in the classroom. And then for resources and opportunities, so again, as you know, our staff is committed to learning and understanding the science of reading through letters, but also I think we, we are really diving into podcasts and workshops and just reading different literature and whatnot. We again have implemented foundations K to three. They're continuing to use Hegarty as a resource for phonological and phonemic awareness. As you know, the Battle of the Books, so that's a big incentive for our older kids. And then in March, we kicked off our elementary district-wide literacy committee. So this is with a focus on fighting a research-based, science-of-reading-aligned program that's really focused on knowledge and content building, vocabulary, grammar, comprehension. So again, all of those domains that you saw in that first slide that we, we know we really want to see improvement with our kids and so we're working really hard to find a program that will fit our needs in London Derry, but will also help our kids to really excel in, in those areas.
So just kind of wrap it all up where we are right now as we look ahead to the spring and just next steps. One, we're on track for growth comparable to last year with what we've seen with improvement in some areas. We have plans in place to continue with our math initiatives. We have started a thorough thoughtful literacy process with our district-wide literacy committee. We have plans in place for continued efforts for alignment of curriculum and assessment across all the elementary schools. And we have plans in place for a more effective and efficient use of the tools and resource, resources such as I Ready. And while I'll turn it over to the middle school.
Did anyone have any questions? You guys good? Thank you.
Good evening. In the fall, the middle school presented our data and we're met with some challenging questions about our growth. We took those questions and turned them into a new vision and set goals for our building. The journey in middle school can be challenging for some students and we are constantly reminded about our place in their education, the middle. Our students are responsible to take their foundational knowledge and learn to apply it in new and challenging ways, all while navigating being a middle schooler. Our staff took this idea of student growth to new levels and conference with students individually, set goals with students and discuss their strengths and weaknesses and how to meet their goals with the assistance of their team and other staff. These conferences take the ownership of learning and give it back to the students, empowering them. We have made great strides in our data that we present to you tonight. LMS Math. This is from I Ready and these scores for each grade level include all four domains of math. Our students made gains tackling the mathematical concepts of numbers and operations and algebraic thinking, which is a focus in our current program. This growth came with an abundance of time spent by both students and teachers in the classroom to ensure that they grew in their understanding. We continue to look for ways to refine our math instruction and it is noted that as the grade of student increases, as does the complexity of the mathematical concepts. You can see on this slide that all of our students are above fifty percent on our early grade level, but are all growing in their math knowledge. LMS has resources and opportunities that include our Math in Focus program, our Storm Time Intervention Block, and we are excited to bring back our Summer Math Academy. We are utilizing two math interventionists for small group instruction currently and we are creating curriculum for remediation for students who need to relearn concepts and to be ready for the following year in math. And again, a targeted and focused approach with student conferencing, growth mindset and student ownership over learning. This is our I Ready reading data and these scores for reading include the six domains of reading as you learned earlier today, from phonological awareness to comprehension of fiction and nonfiction materials. Although our change percentage is not as large as it is in math, it is, should be noted that middle school students are most often proficient in the first three domains prior. So they come in with the phonological awareness, phonics, high frequency words already being met. They've already learned the process of reading and begin making the shift to reading to learn. We have almost sixty percent of our students in grades six and seven earlier on grade level and our current eighth grade class has proven their readiness for high school at seventy percent in the winter. So looking at that, we can expect gains for our springtime assessment as well. We have many opportunities for students to grow in their reading with summer opportunities for remediation if necessary, after-school programming, alternative reading courses like Read 180 or System 44 with goals that are specific to decoding and comprehension. We have summer reading challenges, book groups, and again, a focused approach on student growth. Additional data from LMS includes goal setting using past data and discussing typical growth, stretch growth, and how that applies to each student individually. We celebrate our growth with students and teams around their learning and our staff is taking time in PLC to refine those practices, all while backfilling skills for students who require additional supports. Using storm time for intervention, reassessment and reteaching. And again, the idea of student conferencing and goal setting sends a powerful message to our students. The next slide is new information this year on our PSAT eight-nine. And we present to you on this slide the 2022 information. We had a hundred and nine students take this optional assessment and as you can see, our LMS students scored forty-one percent hi, forty-one points, excuse me, higher on, than average than both the state and a hundred and twenty-three points higher than the total group of test takers. It should be noted that this is a ninth grade assessment and when our eighth graders take this, this assessment, it is early fall of their eighth grade year. These next charts indicate that fifty-eight percent of our students met both the English reading and writing benchmark and the math for the PSAT eight-nine. Eighty-four percent of the students met just the ERW and sixty-three percent met the math benchmark. And we look forward to helping our students prepare even further for this type of assessment and plan to administer the PSAT assessment next year at LHS in the fall. And some additional highlights of our student achievement include sixty students are currently in our advanced math or high math at grade six. We have sixty students in pre-algebra or advanced math at grade seven. Twenty-one students are taking honors algebra at eighth grade. Forty-nine students are in algebra at eighth grade. We have one student attending LHS in an honors geometry course, so two levels above. We have two students next year attending the high school as well for additional math courses. And lastly, we have eighty-four students in world language for high school credit.
Just to kind of summarize a little bit where the middle school is going and to give you just a little bit of context. In April, at the April faculty meeting, I, I rolled out for our staff a one-to-three-year aggressive plan of how we were gonna move forward as a middle school. I'm fortunate enough that I have a staff that's extremely talented and gifted in a lot of areas of instruction, particularly in the middle school area. And in, in summarizing that and also what Megan had said, it's important to note what the middle school is focused on. We continue to focus with a vision of excellence. That's taking what we do well and striving for better. We do function under three pillars that support that vision. It's been in place now for, this is the second year. Those are academic growth, collaborative practices and instructional refinement. Well, this year we focused on collaborative practices as a staff. Collaboration is not a natural process. It's one that you work towards. I have a couple of little props. We did an activity about self-awareness, which is the key point of collaborative practices, trust and tolerance. These are three key components and principles that we focus on as a staff in regards to our collaborative practices. In, in doing so, our, our goal is to build essentially a capacity for better understanding. The better we work together, the further we can push students and the better we can support our kids as they grow and mature throughout middle school. In terms of LMS, the middle school accountability piece, and accountability is a word that you often see thrown around when it comes to assessments. It's the kind of the, the word that's tough to, tough to really define. But really I outline, I outlined for our staff really about academic growth and this is where this, this piece is really critical. You can see that these are the fine, the kind of the points that I emphasize with our group. And that's creating a climate of assessment accountability around I Ready. You need to be able to do that to really make significant growth. We made a lot of growth this year. We anticipate to make growth as we continue and move forward in the next three years and beyond. You gotta value the process. That's the process of progress monitoring of our students and you need to celebrate when we do find success, success in our students and success with our staff. You need to have conversations with students around what they're testing, why they're testing and why it's important. That's a really critical piece to the middle school student understanding why they're doing these assessments. And then you need to take time to disaggregate our students' data. You gotta discuss it with them. And then you've got to learn how to apply it to really very specific improvements in instruction. That is a whole data-driven instructional piece that you often hear us refer to. And what's really important is everyone, no matter what you teach in our building, should be aware of how our students perform, regardless of the subject or position on staff. Everyone needs to be part of this process. It is not solely based on just the subject or content matters we're assessing kids on. Everyone owns every one of our students and that's a really piece, a big piece that leads into number five and that's ownership. I talk a lot about this with staff. You need to own the data that your students perform so we can learn and grow and teach better and meet the needs of our kids. That's a really important piece. And then really the last piece is really building those intrinsic rewards for students and staff. It's very difficult to middle school age, as, as Megan alluded to, in really building a piece of accountability for our students, understanding why they're doing this. And there should be intrinsic rewards. They should feel good about our school performing well, about them performing well and about growing. And it's all really about middle school. It's really about growing and moving forward. And then lastly, you'll see that piece of instructional refinement. When you have a skilled staff as we do and ones who may even post secondary degrees and so forth in studies, you really need to look at closely of how we practice because refinement really has to do with the process of improvement. It's making small gains and small changes. Small changes in instruction make big gains and growth. And really in middle school, and just emphasize as we bring closure to this piece, our goal really as the middle school is to continue to refine what we do with our kids. It's an ever-changing process. We're not looking at making huge changes. We're looking at making changes based on the data of our kids and how they perform. And that concludes the middle school.
Thank you, William. So the high school uses a variety of data sets to determine growth and academic achievement. The ones we want to concentrate on tonight are our dual enrollment courses, advanced placement tech, testing, career and technical education in college prep classes and SATs and PSATs. Again, when we present either in the summer or early fall on the spring results, we'll talk about our graduation rates, acceptance rates, summer school outcomes, because that's when all of that information materializes.
So there are several reasons why students take, choose to take dual enrollment classes in the high school for college credit. Firstly, it can save them time and money by allowing them to earn college credits while still in high school. Thanks to a program through the state of New Hampshire and the community college system of New Hampshire, eligible high school students taking dual or concurrent credit courses through the running start can take up to two STEM, science, technology, engineering and math courses per academic year for free. Tuition then for Manchester Community College is a hundred and fifty dollars per course. Southern New Hampshire University courses cost a hundred dollars. The dual enrollment presents vast savings from the regular cost of college courses. Dual enrollment classes continue to be popular at London Derry High School, as shown in the chart, the number of students who are benefiting by taking those courses. Additionally, it can give them a head start on their college education and a competitive advantage when applying to colleges. Dual enrollment classes also allow students to explore different fields of study and challenge themselves academically.
Before I move to next slide, I'm just gonna jump in. A lot of those college credits those students are earning are accepted all over the country. My son's attending the University of Alabama next fall as a freshman. He'll enter with twenty-one credits that he received from these two programs.
We also offer open enrollment for our advanced placement courses, meaning that any students with an interest in a subject matter are welcome to take that AP course. This year we have four hundred seventy-three enrollments in the sixteen AP courses that are currently being offered. We do not require that students take the college board's advanced placement examination as there is a ninety-seven dollar cost per exam for students. However, this year we have a hundred ninety-seven AP tests being taken this spring to earn college credit and/or advanced placement when students matriculate at the collegiate level. We're currently offering sixteen advanced placement courses based on student requests and have offered additional AP courses when enrollment is sufficient. Advanced placement courses are a popular choice for many of our students looking for challenging coursework.
Our career and technical education and college prep classes, our students have the opportunity, as you know, to enroll in CTE courses at the Manchester School of Technology or at the William Palmer CTE Center in Hudson. Our typical enrollment each year is approximately a hundred students between both schools and they're enrolling in courses such as automotive, cosmetology, culinary, electrical, health science, HVAC, plumbing and natural resources. A lot of these programs lead to apprenticeships or certificate programs where they're parlaying that with a two-year degree or a four-year degree. So we're really trying to push the trades. I believe Dan's gonna speak about that later in the evening. We had a really good meeting with the commissioner and taking a lot of next steps forward. Next year, we're really proud of our, our seniors this year. A lot of them participated in the I Apply Day, which essentially allowed our students to apply to two and four-year colleges and universities for free in New Hampshire. Next year, they're accepting trade schools and apprenticeships as part of those free applications. Additionally, we're gonna have trade representatives come to our school, just like college representatives, to meet with our students to talk about viable options for their future. In-house, our high school has a robust woodworking, metals and graphic arts program that are continually highly enrolled and really interesting electives for our students taking them. Again, super popular classes, outstanding teachers in those programs and we have what I think are excellent facilities in-house. And then finally, our college prep students benefit from a comprehensive program of studies. You recall, we presented that program of studies where they have the opportunity to select from hundreds of courses to fulfill their graduation requirements and electives of interest.
So at the high school, all students do take the PSAT in their fur in the fall. First and second year students take the PSAT ten. Juniors take the PSAT NMSQT. This test administration allows students to experience a college board assessment in a timed setting. For our juniors, the PSAT in the fall provides an opportunity to compete in the National Merit Scholarship Competition. In the spring, all of our juniors take the required SAT that is the state assessment. When looking at the scores on the PSAT, one must be cognizant that the New Hampshire State Average includes many national and international students who matriculate at various preparatory, boarding and day schools in New Hampshire. The SAT state scores are based on the one-day administration provided to all state of New Hampshire public high schools. The SAT state scores are based on the one-day administration provided to all state of New Hampshire public high schools. Our students' performance, therefore, appears inverted between the PSAT and SAT scores. It could be considered a more accurate assessment of our students' performance.
Among our conclusions, at LHS, we're committed to providing all students with a path which best meets their post-secondary goals. Some students avail themselves of the opportunity to take collegiate-level courses through the College Board's Advanced Placement Program or the dual enrollment programs offered through Southern New Hampshire University and Manchester Community College. They are able to do this while in the relative comfort of their home high school. This provides the opportunity to academically challenge themselves and in many cases, earn college credits, which can be used for advancement or the ability to take upper-level courses while in college. This helps students both experience courses in areas of interest or learn what they do not want to study after high school, ultimately saving the student and their family large sums of money. Lunen Derry High School students also have the opportunity to explore career and technical opportunities through the Manchester School of Technology, the Palmer Vocational Center, and our in-house technical education programs, including the very popular welding and woodworking programs. Lunen Derry High School utilizes the PSAT and SAT as an opportunity for students to experience challenging, college-board-sponsored examinations. The SAT, as mentioned, is the state-mandated assessment required of all juniors. Each year, several Lunen Derry High School students receive the designation of National Merit Commended Students, meaning they have performed in the top sixteen thousand students of the one-point-six-million students who take the PSAT. This year, LHS had three commended students and three semifinalists for National Merit Scholarships.
So Paul and I are excited to, with the team, to review and see the spring results as they come in, and we're going to just present some next steps for the next school year and entertain any questions that the board may have on the presentation.
And I think, just looking at the K through twelve system, you know, looking at the elementary kind of providing the foundation, the first piece is to continue to learn and understand the science of reading and how to put that into best practice within our classrooms at the elementary level.
Again, at LMS, there's a, we're striving for student learning through the one-on-one conferencing with students on a mindset growth, getting better at things. There's signage, and that's a major theme at that school, and they do a great job carrying that out. And at the high school, obviously, we are immersed in our competency-based education model, which is a lot of the same themes there, that remediation, reassessment, perfecting both your skill set and your knowledge, and acquiring that through the learning process and working with your teachers is a major focus at our high school. We've enhanced those procedures already this year, and I think that's helped students to better master the content and exhibit their skills.
Looking at math, last year was our first year adopting the Math in Focus 2020 curriculum model, and, you know, this is now year two. As we look ahead, we want to continue to focus on that fidelity, really, K through eight.
Again, at the middle school, they're also implementing Math in Focus and working on their curriculum maps and vertical alignment, and that streamlines through the high school, where there's been a lot of curriculum mapping, particularly in the various departments, core departments, particularly in the area of math, to meet the needs of our students and reflect knowledge in the STEM fields.
And looking ahead to the summer, maintaining our programming. Once again, Summer Math Academy is set up for success with all three schools. All students and families have been notified, and we look forward to adding that once again this summer.
LMS plans to do the same, fostering young readers and writers, challenging them with varied text and writing opportunities. And again, at the high school, our students have a variety of different opportunities to receive additional supports, math lab, meetings with their teachers before and after school. Again, that remediation process, excuse me, to focus especially in the area of math and literacy throughout the school year.
Today, as I was reminded, as our incoming Moose Hill students were at the schools, looking ahead to first grade, we want to continue to build and foster independence, problem-solving, self-reflection, and emotional regulation so students are ready to learn when they arrive at school.
Elements of the portrait of a graduate are continuing to emerge, particularly at the middle school, where those ideals are embedded with self-direction, communication, collaboration, engaged citizenship, and creativity and problem-thinking. And that's something that we really focus on at the high school, again, at an advanced level. Into all courses, they're matched with our core syllabi, and those specific content areas assume the greatest responsibility in each of those areas. So it's always tied to the acquisition of a skill they're going to get out of that course. The course is really just a vehicle to enhance those skills. And we now welcome any questions from the board.
Last one. I know you'd mentioned looking into a unified reading curriculum for the elementary schools. Is there a timeline or a timeframe that you're hoping to achieve on that? Or is that still in a pretty new place?
So.
It's a great question.
I can start it. I'll start it, and then if you want to follow up, Jay. So right now, we actually just went to all the schools' staff meetings. We're going to North School tomorrow, and we're going to Moose Hill next week. But we just announced to the staff that we are looking to implement a couple pilots next year, so we have narrowed it down. So through work through the district literacy committee, we started with probably five or six that were really on the table, that we were looking at. We've been really diligent with researching and talking to other districts and just working with those companies to narrow it down to two that we presented to staff today for piloting opportunities for next year. So next year would really be, again, piloting the programs, really kind of continuing to build that knowledge base, though, for our staff as well, because it is going to be a little bit of a shift in some of the practice in the classroom and what that looks like. So a lot of that will be the education piece throughout the year, but also really diving into those two programs to get a better look at them, to see how they're actually implemented in the classrooms. And another piece of that, too, I think, will be just continuing to educate our community on what this shift might look like and what these programs might look like, so.
I think the exciting piece for us is there's true consistency amongst the three elementary schools with this endeavor. Our staff really at every school has bought in, and most of them have received letters training and understanding the science of reading. You know, they're fully invested, and I'll let Dan just kind of speak to the final elements. He's been the cheerleader and champion of what we've been doing, but I think it's been well-received at the schools, and really, they're ready to embark on this and shift that paradigm in literacy instruction.
So anything with schools is a multi-year process. You know, so literally, I mean, the reading specialists who are just here, you know, we started the science of reading work back in 2018. COVID definitely slowed a lot of that work down, but somehow, we were able to pull off foundations and some of these other things in the midst of the pandemic. So now, we're finally back to normal, and we're a good place. How the pilot plays out is still an open question. I mean, I think we'll move as fast as we possibly can. That's both what our staff can handle and also kind of our budget timelines, you know. So I mean, I think we'll be in a good place to talk about this more in the fall. I just don't have a crystal ball yet, although I'm getting pushed by the people to my right.
I think everybody else is good. Staff, this is tremendous, getting our school districts' updates, you know, back in the fall and in the spring, and now, you know, and then see the final results over the summer. I just think it shows our community, the efforts you folks are putting in, and the data really shows improvement. And like I said a year ago, when we talked about this, is we care about Lunen Derry. You know, that's what our focus is, and you guys have, you know, brought that information here. So it's a great presentation, and I truly appreciate that. Thank you for your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
William, you're up next, I think.
I am. Moving transition just a minute here. So I have some pictures of the kids on DC. So I'm just going to, if all works well, I'll just play the slideshow as I just talked very briefly about our experience there. Let's see, one more click maybe. All right, I'm just going to let this play so you can watch as I speak very briefly about Washington DC. So I am here tonight, very excited to follow up on our eighth-grade DC trip. I'm proud to share that after a three-year hiatus, we successfully had two-hundred-and-twenty-nine students and staff participate in this incredible trip. We departed at 5:00 AM on Tuesday on time, actually, 5:30 on time, and we returned Friday night at 11:30 at night. We were all excited to get off the bus. The group of students represented us LMS positively. They were fantastic throughout the four days there. They were exceptional in all of the locations that we had to go to. We moved throughout the day, all day. You never stand still. I know at least the day that we were at Arlington, that was ten and a half miles of walking. And I've added, oh, three days, I think we must have put in at least fifteen miles of walking. So those kids, they were incredible, as well as everybody else who went with us. But the overall experience really, I think, leaves both of our students and staff lasting memories that will really carry on far beyond their middle school years. The trip would not have been a success without our trip coordinator, Alicia Marks. She's an eighth-grade teacher. She organized every specific detail. It was unimaginable. I could even, to the nth degree, of things that she did to ensure that the entire group moved, got to the locations they needed to be at, and really had a great time. Hours of work, it started really in the summer. It went all the way throughout the course of the year, details after details and so forth, but it really was incredible. In addition, the support of our chaperones, our teachers, parent professionals, administrators. We had a parent there with us, a grandparent, both who served as nurses. I want to just thank Amy Stoddard and Stephanie Akerson. They were there to support the kids. They were up late in the evening, early in the morning, constantly assisting students with any kind of need that came up throughout the course of our time there. One of the things you may see as I scroll through, one of the most memorable things that they have done, and this is something that has been a tradition with the eighth graders going, is that we do visit Arlington, but we actually really bring it home to Lunen Derry as we go and view the gravesite of two former Lunen Derry soldiers. Kids were there. We all gathered around for a moment of silence. We recognized these two individuals. We bring a wreath with us, two wreaths, each to be placed on their gravesites in their honor. The first individual is William Blake Marston, the son of Nancy Marston. She was a school counselor at LMS for many years. The second one is Peter Saum. He is a former LMS and LHA student. I believe his mother also taught at the high school. So we did have a really brief ceremony there, and that was really a touching moment for all of our kids, very respectful, followed through with all of the pieces. This picture right here is, we're at medieval times, we go that night. That was a great time. The kids had a ball with that. So again, overall, World Strides was our tour company, the bus drivers. We had a hotel manager, we had nighttime security. They stayed up all night watching the kids to make sure everything was good. We're extremely helpful and supportive. There was never a time that students did not have assistance at some point. Our buses dropped us off in the corner, on the corners of DC and so forth. So here's us outside the White House. On behalf of the eighth-grade class, I do want to thank the school board for your support in helping us bring this trip back. All of our parents who worked and stayed with us throughout the course of the year, through all the details, our LMS staff, who when we're gone, have to cover for the teachers who were on the trip, and so many in our community who support students. We had tremendous amount of outreach for kids. We had lunch, I mean breakfast, delivered in the morning by one of our local churches. Right when the kids got there, at five o'clock, they were handing out bags of breakfasts for students. It was incredible. We will begin the preliminary planning, and we're meeting with parents from the seventh grade in two weeks to begin talking about next year's trip and getting them prepared for what they can expect and so forth, so. And that really concludes our trip. I don't know if there's any questions or anything that came up, but overall, it was a really fantastic experience for the students and staff, so. Thank you.
Thank you, William. Okay, on to 5.4, ED 306 feedback session, Dan.
Yep, from the Washington DC trip to the minimum standards. You know, just to basically encapsulate how public education works in New Hampshire, a lot of local control, where you guys have the oversight over it. But the way the state is part of the process of how public schools come to be and how they should work is of the minimum standards. So they're going through a process right now of updating those minimum standards. And Fred Bramante, who was kind of in the memo that I shared in the public packet, he used to be a former State Board of Education Chair, is going through this process of gaining feedback from the public around these updates. They seem to be very large updates. I'm trying to become more knowledgeable of them myself. But what I did, and just kind of make sure everyone's okay with it, is I invited Fred to come to the June 27th, you know, so at six o'clock, so it's not a board meeting at six o'clock, but I figured, you know, this is a time when the public usually comes to talk to us. I'll invite him to the six o'clock meeting. I'm sure the administrators and I can give feedback if we don't get a large turnout from the public, but we'll do our best to get parents, families, kids knowledgeable of what's going on to give feedback. And, you know, Fred wants to run a very open process over the next six months and then bring all that feedback to the school board. So I thought, we're one of the larger towns in New Hampshire, we can definitely be part of that process. So he has accepted the invitation. Trying to see if anyone has any questions or concerns before we move forward. Good, so that'll be June 26th at six o'clock. It might mean it bleeds over into the normal school board meeting time, but we'll try and orchestrate a lighter meeting then, so it wouldn't be too problematic.
Great, thank you, Dan.
And then, before we jump into the next thing, we forgot to do the consent agenda.
No, I did it.
Did we vote on it?
Oh, we didn't vote on it. You're right, correct, thank you. Could I have a vote to approve the consent agenda, please?
Second.
Motion by Amanda, second by Sarah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, Dan. All right, we're going to open the public hearing. I'm going to ask for a roll call vote on this, please. So I'll look for a motion to open the public hearing on acceptance of Beyond School Enrichment Grant Funds.
So moved.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Kevin. Roll call vote, please. It's up to Kevin.
Hi, Kevin Murray.
Hi, Tim Porter.
Hi, Bob Slater.
Hi, Sarah Lockman.
Hi, Amanda Butcher.
Thank you. Lisa.
Good evening. A couple of weeks ago, we reported that we had applied for and was granted the Beyond School Enrichment Grant in total of two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand, four-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars. This is going to fund our Summer Math Academy, which has been funded the past couple of years through ESSR funds. But by using this grant for the funds this summer, that'll enable us to use the remainder of the ESSR grants for the summer of 2024. So that's really good news. It really extends our summer program through grant funding for another whole summer. The schools that would be granted is Matthew Thornton is getting sixty thousand, eight-seventy-four, along with North and South, the same amount, and the middle school is thirty-seven, eight-oh-six. The funding includes teachers, tutors, site director, and transportation for our Summer Math Academy 2023. This is just a formal acceptance of these funds by the school board and giving the opportunity to the public to comment on it if they wish.
Okay, I'll go to the public first and bring it back. If there's anyone in attendance that would like to speak on this, floor is yours. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. Any questions on this grant? All right, I'll look for a motion to accept two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand, four-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars for the Beyond School Enrichment Grant.
So moved.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Amanda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Prove five-zero. Could I have a motion to come out of the public hearing, please?
So moved.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Amanda. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We are out of public hearing. Thank you very much. And I will open the floor to public comment. Please state your name and address if you would like to speak tonight. Thank you.
Jonathan Esposito, Five Shelley Drive. Just have a couple of items of concern that are brought up to the school board and the district that I'd like to reference during public comment, just to try to invite as much of the public to that conversation as possible. Not that the room is exactly full tonight, Mr. Chair. Not that the room is exactly full tonight, Mr. Chair. As I believe you're aware, I did send some correspondence to the school board inquiring if there is going to be an updated renegotiation of our Huxit Memorandum of Understanding. There has been some contentious dialogue before this board or prior sessions of the board in the past regarding what taxpayer base is paying for the transportation of Huxit students here. I'm aware that the current memorandum of understanding seems to be expiring on June 30th, and there is an option to renew. The district does have a habit, a kind of a regular pattern of behavior in which they take an action and then kind of educate the public on it after. And I would like to ask that that not occur in this case, that the public be brought to the table, especially where several members of the public have had, have expressed these concerns before, you know, before we go renewing a memorandum of understanding with Huxit. We'd like to be very clear as to who's paying for their transportation, because per my reading of that memorandum, if the Huxit School District doesn't approve those funds, we can be billing the parent directly. But as citizen Christine Perez has addressed with Peter Caro for many years running, the Londonderry taxpayer seems to have been paying for those Huxit students to come here. So I'd like for that to be an item of discussion before the public, before we just, you know, sign off, renew that memorandum, and then tell everybody after the fact. That would be much appreciated. I do have several items here, but where there's not a lot of folks in the public, if I run a minute or two over, I do appreciate your patience.
Bob, do you want me to say something?
John, can we just hit on that last one you had? We do, we've already discussed it, so.
Yeah, so I think you're a couple of months too late, but we went over this all in November and December. And we have a new agreement, and we've ratified it, and the Huxit Board is going to ratify it on May 16th, and we'll have a new memorandum on July 1st. And basically, the economics really work out in our favor. Paying for the bus allows us to have many more students and recoup the cost pretty easily, which I believe Lisa McKenney showed you in an email earlier today. Jason, did you want to add to that?
Yeah, just, so that email was sent by you this morning, right, Mr. Esposito? So we're just, I just need a couple of days to get back and get all that information together. But it was, we are going to reference a prior board meeting where all of this was covered.
I guess that's concerning that we're just accepting that the Londonderry taxpayer has been on the hook in the past, and so we are now. I guess I'll have to go to Huxit and hopefully address some of my concerns before that memorandum is ratified on that end, as I do seem to be a bit late here. So I will move on to the next item. I appreciate it.
Yep.
It's interesting that we do have a situation, you know, that we're entering into another memorandum of understanding. I'm actually going to stay on that topic regarding busing students, because several parents in the community are complaining that there seems to be a preference in busing regarding sports activities. We seem to be able to provide consistent busing for some athletic activities, but not others. Several members of the community were not delighted that they had to provide their own child's transportation to a track meet today. So we seem to have busing for students who aren't members of this community, but not busing for athletics for organic Londonderry students and athletes. I do have some contention there that I would like to note. I'd also like to discuss how Dan Black addresses the community as our superintendent. If you talk to parents in districts that he has been employed in prior to being our superintendent, you won't see a lot of favorable response. He tends to be rather harsh and straight. Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I'm speaking. I believe I am the floor for public comment, Mr. Chairman, and I believe the First Amendment allows me to address an individual directly. So as I am understanding the chair, the superintendent needs to hold his peace and allow the citizen to speak, please.
Hold up. Please address me, and let's keep, let's keep.
I am addressing you, Mr. Chairman. I'm referring to.
Let's keep names out of it, please.
No, unfortunately, the First Amendment does allow me to name an employee of the district and regard their official duties and actions and to express my opinion as such. So no, under 91A, you have no right to ask me to keep names out of it. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I will continue to address you, sir, but I do wish to address how Superintendent Black addresses members of the community. I'd like to read an email that he sent when a community member inquired as to why there was not a Teams link for the May 4th kindergarten committee meeting. Sorry, community member. There are many unreasonable people in Londonderry. I had a few claim that the meetings of the kindergarten committee were violating the 91A requirements. They are, but I'll address that later. They were never specific, but I assumed they meant the fact that one or two of the actual members were attending electronically. We were always within the bonds of the law because we had a quorum of the committee in person over the last few months. That's also an incorrect statement. I will go forward to address that. I was always fine with having you and others attend electronically, this part I want you to focus on, but when it came down to the drama of being scolded for illegal meetings, I didn't want to take the chance. Again, if some people in the community were more reasonable, this wouldn't be a problem. Folks, that's appalling. That's absolutely appalling that the superintendent has received queries questioning whether or not the kindergarten committee is fully in compliance with 91A. And has decided to, I'm sorry, I do believe this is still public comment. I do believe I am the floor, Mr. Chairman, if you would prohibit the superintendent from engaging in further remarks until I'm finished. That's not an acceptable way to address members of the committee or to refer to it as drama being brought up by members of the community simply because we're questioning whether or not the law is being followed. Actually, Mr. Chairman, you sent me an email on April 18th in which you listed 15 members of the kindergarten committee, 15 active members. I'm going to refer back to that list. I have Sandra Mack, Dan Black, Barbara Caro, Amanda Butcher, Kevin Gray, Amanda Longo, Donna Trainum, Tony DiFrancesco, Jeff Penta, Nancy Hendricks, Jeff Garside, Maggie Garside, Chris Moore, Amy Alexhauser, forget any pronunciation, Kaylee Esposito. 15 active members of the committee that you gave me as a list. That would require a quorum of at least eight members in person for any attendance of that committee. If you go back and look at the December 2022 minutes, there's like three people in person. It's not a quorum under 91A. Any business conducted at that meeting by the kindergarten committee, there was no quorum under 91A. I believe, if you refer back to the minutes of subsequent meetings before then, you will also see that as 91A would define a quorum, one is not met. So citizens are absolutely correct to question whether or not the committee is meeting and conducting its function as a subcommittee in compliance with New Hampshire RSA 91A. I appreciate that you're nodding along in agreement. It's also concerning that the district is still not being forthcoming with documents. Transparency is an item that I have addressed with prior sessions of the school board, and I addressed this new session of the school board, and I said that I really hope that with a new elected member and a new chairperson, that we would see more transparency. We have not. There were documents that were handed out to members of the public and to a quorum of the kindergarten committee on May 4th. When those documents hit those quorums' hands, when those were handed out to any single member of the public, that became a version of that document. Now, there may be subsequent versions of it that are draft or working product, but that became public record, releasable under 91A. And yet, when I email Mr. Parent, Mr. Black, and the school board, and I say, hey, I wasn't able to attend the May 4th, 2023 kindergarten committee meeting because of work. No Teams link was provided because the superintendent now doesn't want to invite community members because he's afraid of violating 91A, even though it's allowed under 91A. I asked for the presentation that was given, and I asked for a copy of the Phase 1 and Phase 2 Moose Hill Plan, and I'm denied. I'm denied unlawfully under 91A by Mr. Parent. Mr. Parent's response was that the Moose Hill staff have not had an opportunity to be presented this information, and that they're going to be presented it by Sandra Black on May 16th, I believe it is. And so basically, I, as a member of the community, need to just sit and wait on it until then. No, I'm a taxpayer. I've had all three of my kids go through Moose Hill. I'm entitled to see that presentation if I wasn't able to make that committee meeting, and it's public record under 91A. The district has no right refusing me that information, has no right refusing any other member of the community that information, has no right asking us to wait until Sandra Mack can brief a portion of the Moose Hill staff on May 16th. And I'd also like to address remarks that were made by committee member Tony DiFrancesco at the May 4th, 2023 kindergarten committee meeting, in which he explicitly stated that anything that was there for a Phase 1 or Phase 2 Moose Hill plan had not been approved or recommended by a quorum of the committee. So it begs the question, why would Sandra Mack be briefing her staff on something that isn't finalized or approved by the committee? This has 91A wrongness all over it.
Can I, can I jump in here? I think you sent this information to us just over the last day or so. The board has not been able to discuss this yet. It will be discussed with the information you have forwarded us. That's all I can tell you at this time.
I mean, I guess this is your second term on the school board, Mr. Chairman, and it's, since the new session of the board has started, I understand that you've probably only met three or four times, but we're like 45 days in now. And whether or not you folks are still getting caught up on things, Mr. Black, as the administrative head of the district, is fully well-aware of what his requirements are supposed to be under 91A. He's well-informed, so I don't know why I am waiting for you folks to catch up. I mean, yes, I just sent my emails complaining about this today, but other community members have sent these complaints prior. I've sent these complaints prior. This is not a new matter, so to say, oh, I just learned about it, that flies about as well as it did when we were discussing Peter Caro's contracting. I'm sorry.
Thank you, John.
I haven't concluded unless you're asking me to conclude, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, it's been about nine minutes, John, so I appreciate your concerns, and we will get back to your emails that were sent today.
Okay, is it possible for me to address one more matter before we conclude my public comment?
I'll give you 30 seconds. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for giving me the opportunity to catch up. I do appreciate you. Now that works. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'd like to just address something in this part before we go out of public comment, unless there's some other public comment, anyone else? I think this board does a really good job of listening to people and getting back to people. When we get bombarded with emails and information that is well-taken with any questions towards the school district or school board or staff, we try to answer them as soon as possible, as quick as possible, to stay, to keep people informed. I can honestly tell you, I have been involved in this district now on this side of the table onto my fourth year. Spent a tremendous amount of time in this community. And I'm sorry, Mr. Esposito, that we have not satisfied a lot of your concerns. You do have some good valid points. But I think for the most part, what you see is we don't get a lot of complaints. We get a fair amount, but we work diligently. Our staff works diligently. We're not perfect. We're trying to do the best for our children, for our taxpayers. And I understand your problem, but please give us some time to answer your questions. We put everything in writing. We get back to you. I agree. You may not agree with what we say, and that's your prerogative and that. But for the most part, this is what we get for public comment, because we're doing a good job overall. And I just don't want to get into a back and forth. We want to answer questions. We want to correct things that you may find fault in on our behalf, on our staff, and that's fine. But overall, I believe we are doing yeoman's work with our staff, with our school district. You've seen it tonight with the grading system, how our kids are performing in the classrooms, and that. I understand your business concerns and that. Well taken. We will get back to you with all your answers and your emails. We're not, we're not trying to put anybody off. So I just want everybody, you to understand that we take a lot of pride in what we do here for these children and taxpayers. So I just wanted you to know that.
You were kind enough to give me another 30 seconds, and I'm not going to elaborate for that whole time period, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to respond to remarks that you just made. It's not a question of whether or not the school district or the school board has satisfied Jonathan Esposito's expectations of how you should be performing, or Jonathan Esposito's expectations of how Daniel Black or Jason Parent is performing. That is not fundamentally what is at issue here. What is fundamentally at issue here is that we have a school district by all appearances who continuously makes excuses for running afoul of 91A, which is the law. It is not Jonathan Esposito's expectations for the board of the district. It is the law. I'm questioning whether or not you're running afoul of the law, so I do appreciate you receiving those concerns, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. No other public comment. I'll close it now, and we'll move into committee reports. There's no student council here tonight. School board liaisons. I'll start down this end. Kevin?
From the senior committee, there was no meeting between last one and this one, so no updates there. From the two PTAs, both of them are in the middle of the Teacher Appreciation Week right now. Celebration signs out front of both schools, North and South, going through things such as ice cream days, coffee bars, lunches, and more to celebrate the teachers and the staff. Well-earned, well-deserved, and generally seems to be well-received. Everyone seems to be enjoying it, from what I understand, so that is going great. Specific to South, they're full-on planning for the fifth grade send-off day in June, as well as the South School Family Picnic, which is going, a new event they're having in lieu of a spring fling with multiple food trucks and kind of an outdoor celebration picnic-y feel they're going for. And that's also coming up in, I believe that's end of May. North School is planning its fifth grade fun day as well, as well as getting the yearbooks out. They just finished up their daughter dance, which was a huge success, again, this past, hopefully this past Friday. And the Fisher Cats outing is coming up in June. It is going to be coming up shortly to parents to sign up for.
Great. Thank you, Kevin. Hannah, hold on a second. Amanda?
Yep. Hang on one second. Let me just pull it up. All right, I just have one update from Moose Hill, or several, one large update of many bullet points. May was the last PTA meeting, just last Thursday. The toucher truck event is going to be this upcoming weekend on May 13th from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and there's still a need of some volunteers, if anyone has any time to spare. The winners for the police car ride-along raffle have been announced. And the Moose Hill staff just wanted to thank the school resource officers for the support in providing their rides. The kids really enjoyed it. The PTA is looking for a chair to run the Old Home Day Toucher Truck at Moose Hill for August. And they have both secretary and treasurer board positions available for the 2023-2024 school year. And the vote will take place for those positions in the fall.
I just have a couple. The budget committee met last week and held an update of a 91A put on by the town manager. And Matthew Thornton, during school vacation week, the pavilion was able to be completed and ready for use at Matthew Thornton. So project well-done. All right, moving on, deliberations. We'll open 9.1, approval finalized lease at North School. Lisa?
Okay, we talked about the portable at North School a couple board meetings ago. We have signed the contract for that, and we are expecting shipment, hopefully the end of July, but it could potentially be the beginning of August, so they'll have a short timeframe to get everything ready, and we are hopeful that everything will fall in place. This is the financing of that. I just need formal approval from the board with all these financing details. The purchase price of the unit was $165,750. It's a little, a couple thousand more from what we spoke about, and that's because we did relocate the doors from the side over to the end to get the exits away from that driveway. We're going to put $30,000 down, which was included in the fiscal year '24 budget. So the finance amount is $135,750. We have an interest rate of 5.99%, a term of seven years, and it puts the annual payment at $24,512.39. So I just need the board's formal approval to accept the financing.
And this is a dollar buyout at the end, I believe? Is that correct?
Yes, yes, we will own this in seven years.
After the seven years. Any questions? I'll look for a motion to approve the lease purchase financing on the North School portable.
So moved.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Amanda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? 5-0. Thank you, Lisa. And 9.2, motion to give authority to Superintendent Black to dismiss uncertified employees.
Yep, very quickly, with the intersection of New Hampshire Department of Ed Rule 301, 303.01A and Policy BBA, it's not entirely clear if the school board does give the superintendent authority to hold dismissal hearing for an uncertified employee. You know, there has been a couple actions that come up that the Human Resources Department has brought my way. I think with the board's blessing, we would prefer to go through a dismissal hearing at the administrative level. And then based on that, the employee can still appeal to the school board. So we're just looking for that authority right now, and I'd also recommend that we look at Policy BBA over the summer to really clarify how the school board wants to conduct business between certified and uncertified employees in the future.
All right. Any discussions? All right. Any discussions? I have a paragraph here by our attorney to be read, and then we'll do some work, as Dan stated, over the summer to update some suspension and dismissal policies. But we'd like to put this paragraph in, and I'll read this and look for a motion. "I make a motion for the board to clarify that it delegates authority to the superintendent to dismiss uncertified employees under New Hampshire Department of Education Rule Ed. 303.01A and Board Policy BBA. If this clarification is contrary to specific language in an applicable collective bargaining agreement, the collective bargaining agreement will govern." Motion for that?
So moved.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Kevin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Five zero. Thank you, Dan. All right, moving up. 10.1, Food Service Report. Crystal?
Good evening, everyone. How are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm good. We're just going to do a quick overview on how dining services is doing at the moment. So we're just going to look at a quick overview, touch on our financials, the fund balance, our free and reduced data, equipment needs that I'm still looking into, and the updates for the point of sale and our Titan updates. So we're still looking at a total budget of $1,795,000. Food service is a self-funded program, and our revenues and expenses need to match at the end of the year per state law. Excuse me one second. I'm sorry, I broke it. And I did just want to touch base. The program is currently back in its first year after all of the federal government, the federal government was covering the costs for breakfast and lunches for students. The financials, we are looking at a revenue so far of $1,239,000, I'm sorry, $3967, with an expenses of $1,309,350. So our current profit to loss as of this date is $70,283. But for my year in production, we do have additional grants from the state. So we are actually looking at a productive... These make me very nervous. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Take your time.
We did get an additional grant from the state, so we are actually projecting a minor gain of approximately $50,000 to $100,000. For our current revenues, breakfast is still at $175,000 for all of the levels, and our current pricing for the lunch program has stayed the same. So the high school is still $3.50, $3.00 for our middle school, and $2.75 for our elementaries. We did have that price increase of 55 cents, and because of that, I am not proposing any price increases for the next school year. Our current state reimbursements have stayed the same. So for breakfast, we are still looking at $2.29 for our free students, $2.26 for our reduced students, and 53 cents for our paid students. And for our lunch reimbursements, free is still $4.41. Our reduced students are still $4.01, and our paid students is 85 cents.
If I could just chime in there for a minute. I think if you look at the state reimbursements, this is the explanation why fund balance is so high in this fund. The state reimbursements are at a higher rate than our prices are. So over the last two years, where it was free from the government through the federal program, we were getting these prices for these lunches. So we had high participation because it was free, so most students were taking advantage of the breakfast and lunch, and we were getting the higher rate. So when we talk, when I get into the quarterly reports and I talk about the food service financials, that is, this data really supports why that fund balance is so high.
These are just a quick breakdown of the lunch prices for the surrounding districts. As you can see, London Dairy falls a little bit on the high side, but we are still in a competitive place, and those prices will stay the same for next school year when the other districts will probably be increasing theirs. And then for our operating expenses, labor and benefits are still running about 4%. Food, milk, and supply costs are still volatile, but they are starting to even out. Supply chain issues are also starting to level out, and the co-op pricing is decreasing for the next school year, so that is a positive. For our fund balance, our fund balance policy is that we're supposed to keep 3% of gross sales, so that is roughly about three months of expenses. And we are sitting at $829,000, and that was from the FY '22 year-end. That balance, as Lisa had said, came about because the reimbursement for breakfast and lunch was so much higher, and you had so much more participation. Any negative balances at the end of the school year will be covered by the general fund. And as I had said previously, for the ending of this school year, we are looking at an increase to the fund balance of $50,000 to $100,000 from this current year's operations. Oh, and I'm sorry, the 3% of gross sales, those three months of expenses, would roughly run about $660,000.
So we were informed by the state when our fund balance was so high that it's too high, and they need us to bring that number down. They only want it to be at a maximum of about $660,000 for us. So we will be proposing some equipment purchases and ways to bring that fund balance down, so we're in compliance with the state requirements.
And that does pull us into the equipment needs. Some of the equipment has actually already been purchased. There was a reach-in refrigerator that was purchased for the high school, and there was also a three-door freezer that was purchased for the high school. We are planning to replace all five dishwashers at each of the locations. Each unit is approximately 20 years old, and there are just multiple repairs that are kept up on them.
I think at budget time, we had proposed three dishwashers. We didn't know from the state that they were going to require us to bring down that fund balance, so we are proposing to fast-track that a little bit and do all five. It'll probably, we're hoping to be able to get that done this summer, but to be determined, so we fast-track that a little bit, because we're going to do three this summer and two next. But since the state wants us to spend down that money, we have this as a great opportunity to fast-track the equipment needs.
Lisa?
Yep.
You said the fund balance exceeds the $660,000.
Mm-hmm.
What is it currently at?
$829,000 as of the last fiscal year. And then we're projecting to add to it this year because they...
The $50,000 to $100,000.
They gave us another grant real late. I mean, not that getting money is ever a bad thing, but I think I'll be talking about that when I do the quarterly. It's about another $80,000. So we were projecting to be right around break even, and now with that grant, I expect us to have another small add to fund balance, probably in the area of $50,000 to $100,000. So we really, we're in a good spot that we can act. We have aging equipment that needs to be replaced. So we're certainly not spending money that doesn't need to be spent, and they want us to spend it down, and we need the equipment. So it's a good opportunity to do that, but the program will show a loss next year, not this year. We don't think it'll be this year.
So what I have for you guys is just a quick overview of your free and reduced data for the district. The numbers have stayed in line with where they were at the beginning of the year. There hasn't really been any movement. Of the 4,147 students that we have enrolled, we have 8% of them are free, only 2% fall into reduced, and 3% of those students are denied. But we do have a significant amount of students, about 87%, that don't even apply. The eligibility breakdown for that is, just as an example, a household of five to qualify for free meals, their year-to-date would need to be $42,211. And for a house of five for a reduced status, that year-to-date would be $60,070. So the update for the point of sale, we are currently using the K-12 Payment Center. And previously, the Titan Family Portal had been sent out to parents, so I do apologize that there was a little hiccup with that. But I have been working with Titan, and we are now projecting August of the next school year, Titan will be up and functional and ready for parents to use.
We'll be sending communication out for people to be able to create accounts, or parents to create accounts for their students when the time comes. Crystal and her staff have been working with a lot of inventory, which incorporates into this program, and they'll be getting the payment portal up up and running for next school year. So there'll be communications coming to parents with all of that information.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
Just out of curiosity, why did, what is better about the new one? Why did you guys decide to make the, I know we already talked about it, so I know it wasn't Crystal, you doing it, but what were the reasons behind that?
So K-12 Payments is actually part of the linked system, and Titan is also owned by that system. I actually did call them to verify when I had first come in, and they will actually be removing K-12 Payments. So by getting attached to Titan now, which will be their system moving forward, we're just kind of getting to it a little early. They have like a three-year window for everything to be moved over, but the previous director had already started that process.
It won't be supported. We have to make the move.
Okay, thank you. Just asking, because my credit card saved on the other one. But seriously.
So I think as we entered this year, it was a year of a lot of new things. We were coming out of two years of being free. We had to come back to normalcy and find out where our participation was going to be with the program. We had a new food service director. So I think, you know, we've really pushed through. This program has done well. It's finishing the year with a profit. We did have that 55 cent increase. We went into that not really understanding food prices, what they were doing. We knew they were going to go crazy, so we did do the 55 cent increase. I think that covered the volatility in the food. There still is some volatility. We don't really know, but we are really comfortable keeping the prices where they are. Moving into next year, having this really comfortable fund balance to always back us up. So if we find next year it's not enough, we'll just put the price increase into the year after that. We have the fund balance to fall back on, so that should cover us for next year moving forward. So if anybody has any questions on the program, Crystal's here to answer them for you.
Any questions?
You didn't break. Gets easier.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
All right, we'll move right into Lisa.
The third quarter financial report. As we enter the third quarter, the general fund is in decent shape. First of all, I'll talk a little bit about the COVID grants, which, you know, I bring up at every quarterly report because it was a substantial amount of money that we did receive. We are still using SRR3 and the ARP IDA grant we're still using. So I think it's important to mention those funds because it did offset a lot of the programs that we're doing over the last, what, two years or three years. We also received the SAFE grant for $560,000. Those are substantial grants in addition to the grants we usually get, the IDA, the Title I's. So I think it's important to mention those grants. We are in process of, on the SAFE grant, that's funding some access points and some interior doors that we're getting quotes on. So we'll be bringing that back to the board when we have more information on the door locks and the quotes and where they're ending up. But it's important to say that we have those funds from the federal government, which is helping us out to make our schools more secure. When we talk about the general fund, you know, I think the real simplicity of it is, is you have revenues, you have expenses. The difference between the two gets you your fund balance. So I'll talk a little bit about revenues first. We're projecting in excess of $300,000 over budget. It's mostly due to the special education aid that we get. And also, we received an additional $42,000 in credits from the Eversource for the LED lighting project. Not credits, what do you call them?
Rebates.
There you go. Thank you. Rebates. So that was above and beyond what we had budgeted. So that comes right into revenue, and it'll go right to fund balance and offset that. So revenues is at about $300,000. And then if we go to the expenditure side, we're predicting the expenditure side to be in the range of $500,000 to $600,000. So that'll net us out about, after we fund the articles that were funded with fund balance through the budget process, which is about $403,000, that'll leave us about $100,000 to $200,000 at year-end that we'll bring back to the board, and they can determine whether we retain that or we give it back to the taxpayer. If you, the capital reserve accounts, I will be bringing back, I think on May 23rd, some withdrawal requests on those. We have spent the money that was budgeted for the capital reserves throughout the year. And then at the, towards the end of the year in the spring, we always come forward with what those expenditures were and request a withdrawal from the capital reserve funds, which are held in trustee over at the town. I think I talked about revenues mostly. There's a whole chart that details out. I highlighted the two most important or the highest areas that were different from the budget. On the expenditure side, I'll talk about the areas that were over and the areas that were under. Salary accounts has a savings to the budget of over $1 million, and that is really due to the large number of retirements that we saw in fiscal year '22. Typically, a teacher could retire, and we often mostly would hire a teacher at a much lower rate, and that savings comes back to the budget. And then you'll see the health and dental premiums, and then the teacher-employer accounts, and those often, those accounts often go hand-in-hand with the savings and salary accounts. The areas that we went over budget are, there's a sped purchase administrative services line that's showing a $480,000 overage. What that accounts for is the special ed assistance that we did contract out versus being able to hire outright. So that's offset with a salary line that is under and a contracted line that's over. We had the money in the salary line to cover that, that overages. We also went over in the nursing psychology for about $133,000. That is a special ed requirement, usually by IEPs. We went over about $60,000 in the professional services, and that covered our security resource officers that we had opted to utilize at our elementary schools. That was not budgeted for. We had about $42,000 went over in the admin services, which this was communications for building security, and this was for the radios. The radios were funded with the security article, and this was the balance. The radios were funded with the security article and this was the balance that, when the security article for fiscal year '23 ran out, we had $42,000 that needed to come into the general fund to be paid. We have fuel costs at 23,000 that went over. The LED lease payment is 251,000. That is offset by some savings that we're seeing in the utility accounts. That project did get delayed with some supply chain issues, so it didn't, it didn't get completed till about December. All schools were completed by December, so we definitely are seeing savings in revenues to offset that. Vocational tuition is over by about 59,000. This was a attendance adjustment that they had sent. Then legal fees is over about 28,000. And then we have a $43,000, which is due to the facility study and some security training. And the areas that would fund all those overages would of course be the, mostly the salary accounts or the utility accounts. Then if we go over to the dining services, you know, we talked a lot with Crystal here tonight about where that program is ending up. We are surprisingly expecting to end the year with a small profit, which we didn't expect with all the volatility in the food. But the state came through with an $81,000 grant at the, probably about two weeks ago, we got word on that. And I think that's going to put us over the break-even point to the, put us in the black, which is, which is good news. I'm not going to say that's bad news then. That'll allow us to hold our prices, so we can see what happens next year as participation stabilizes. And we talked about the state requirements on fund balance and so we made the request for the equipment, that we're going to fast-track that a little bit. It should show a loss for next year in the program, but that's okay. We need to show that loss to bring that fund balance down. The COVID grants, I'm not going to go through because there's nothing new that we are doing with the COVID funding. I do have the spreadsheet on the website if anybody's interested in seeing all the details as to where we've spent money on previous SRR grants and where we are currently spending the money on the SRR3 grant. Information's all available. If anybody has any questions, they can certainly reach out. So with that, I will take, any questions anybody has on quarter three?
Any questions? Any questions?
As far as the equipment that you're looking to purchase to bring the number below the 660 threshold, do you know specifically which, I see that you broke down the costs that are projected for those units. Do you know specifically which ones, are there ones in particular you've looked at?
The dishwashers?
Yeah, just because of the large number.
Yeah, the dishwashers are, five dishwashers, I think. We have five dishwashers at 137,000.
Right, that's what I'm talking about.
So how much are each of them?
No, I'm just curious if there are particular units that you know you want in comparison to other ones.
Yeah, she has specked it out and she's in the process of getting quotes on that, on the dishwasher that would meet her requirements. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Yeah, mhm. Yep, she would have a specific need. Crystal, could you speak to that as to the dishwashers?
Not a problem. So I am currently working on getting quotes for the dishwashers. I had had some initially, but then I just wanted to shop around a little more. I would prefer to stick with the Hobart units. They have a very long shelf life, so long as they are maintained properly. The ones that you have are Hobarts and they've lasted 20 years. There were a few things that I did not take into account, which is why I went back to the drawing board to get a few more quotes. I had not taken electrical and plumbing into account, so that was an oversight on my part. I wish I had more information for you on that. But I have been emailing back and forth and I can get that information to you when you need it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Lisa, just to hit on the SRR, we have about 230,000 left and I think it was discussed earlier that will go towards Math Academy in 2024.
Yes.
And we'll use the grant that Paul was able to get for us for this coming summer.
Yep, that is the plan.
Perfect, thank you. No other questions? I think we're good, Lisa. Thank you. And we'll move into 10.3, Special Education Review Update. Dan?
Yep, if you remember from the last board meeting, Bob surfaced a study from the Public Consulting Group. So I reached out to them and I reached out to the WestEd Group. If I had tracked down the Public Consulting Group maybe a day or two earlier, I probably could have compared apples to apples for this meeting. But I think in a future meeting, we can kind of put both the groups side by side. But what I gave you all is, you know, kind of the scope of what the WestEd Group does when they do their special education reviews. You know, it's a fairly common thing. I would say it looks like WestEd and both Public Consulting Group are two very large, qualified organizations. They do similar work. You know, I had a verbal conversation with Public Consulting Group on Friday, but they do school visits, they do individual interviews, IEP reviews, surveys for parents, focus groups, document reviews, quantitative reviews. It's pretty extensive. I would say both companies and groups, you know, these reviews last about six months. They're very up for us tailoring it around very specific areas of what we're looking for, which I think is good. And, you know, I think both groups have a good track record of doing this work nationally, which I think is attractive because it's hard to look at your system, but I think the farther you can look away from it and be a little bit more removed and look in will be helpful to us. So I am hopeful that I can sit down with Kim and her team in the next couple of weeks, kind of look at both of these groups side by side and maybe by one of our June board meetings, we come back with our recommendation between the two. They definitely seem to be highly qualified and know what they're doing, as well as being good partners with school districts. So, you know, what you see is the WestEd and I had a very similar conversation with Public Consulting Group on Friday, that they just didn't, you know, meet the deadline for the board packet, but I think both groups can come back side to side kind of in the future. If you guys have any questions or further thoughts?
Questions? Questions? No, it looks good. So you're hoping over the next month to meet with PCG there?
Yep, so I met with them on Friday, like the initial review.
Yep.
And I think, you know, what I want to do is bring both of these, kind of like, here's how we do the work, to Kim and her team. Let them look at it and then ask both groups for an official proposal.
Yep.
And then we'll review the proposals and then kind of bring it back to the school board to kind of discuss.
Yep.
And figure out if we think one or the other is better. They both look highly qualified. I think whatever direction we go, we'll be fine. It looks like the cost will run us between 40,000 to 60,000. That's pretty much where they seem to run. So, you know, I think they're fairly comparable. We just want to do our homework on our end before we bring it back to you all.
Yep. And I noticed about budgeting money for this, I noticed you threw that in the last paragraph.
Yeah.
If we were to sign on with them, we could probably utilize some of the fund balance.
Yep.
And then work with the balance. Lisa will have a better idea come end of June, but if we sign a contract with them in June, that we could possibly use that rather than go into the rainy day account.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think that'd be my recommendation. You know, this was unbudgeted. If we want to get this done next year, that's probably the best path in front of us because once July hits, the new year is too new. We don't know where we're at yet to be able to.
I assume they would start in August sometime?
Yep.
And then it would take about six months to get back to us with the full?
Yep.
Third-party review?
Yeah, both groups mentioned like an August to December window in terms of how these things work.
Okay. Look forward to the other information as well. Thank you.
Cool.
And 10.4, follow-up on vocational programs?
So Mr. Perrin and I got to meet with the Commissioner of Education and the Jeff Beard or Jim Beard?
It's Jeff Beard, that was my team.
Jeff Beard, yeah, sorry. Jeff Beard, who runs the CTE programs in the state, so we met with them on Friday too. It was a really good conversation to kind of build off the last meeting with our local representatives coming here. You know, and I kind of, I walked away with three general things to think about and I think Jason will probably add to this more detail. But in general, you know, the way the state runs is there's these CTE centers and that's where the vocational programs happen. We sent our kids to two of them, but there's obviously two more that are also closer by that our kids could access in the future. If there isn't a program, the two we go to with Hudson and Manchester, or they're overcrowded, so there are more opportunities. The Commissioner and Jeff did talk about, you know, if we ever wanted to bring programs here, sure, it's possible, but the pie of the Perkins Grant, which is the federal grant that kind of runs the CTE, is always going to be the same size, so they'd just be dividing it up. And the way, if we ever brought a program here, it had to be specialized, not offered at any of the other local CTE centers. So if that's ever a route we would go, that would probably take a multi-year effort. We have to really identify something that would be unique that we could offer, that isn't offered somewhere else. And then obviously, any sending school could send their kids here too. So that was one part of our conversation. Do you want to jump in?
Yeah, they also indicated that for those singletons, there's not a lot of money and not a lot of reimbursement coming our way because they're singleton courses as opposed to entire programs.
Yep, but it's a good conversation of the landscape. I think where the conversation was the deepest is around apprenticeships. You know, so there's a lot of activity in the state around apprenticeships. That could be an area that we just become more robust in our programming on in general. There's a lot of companies in this area that do want high school kids to come to them to have apprenticeships. There are some connections with local community colleges in terms of them earning credit. But in general, I think Jeff was really recommending, as was I think the Commissioner, that we really start to think about the companies and trades that are around us, what our students' interests are, and really sort of think about that avenue, kind of expanding that potentially more down the road. It's becoming a really good way for us to do a better job, helping kids be more prepared for the working world. Is that a good way?
Absolutely. And they can, they've already established connections and affiliations with a lot of the trades and apprentice programs. So they essentially, you know, encouraged us. We've had career fairs in the past, in addition to college fairs, but they could, they could help us offer a career fair entirely in this area, just through their connections. And then that would educate our kids on work-based learning opportunities and then the related instruction after-school evenings while they're also learning, learning the trade. So there's a lot of exciting opportunities for students and I think we need to expose them to that. And we plan to do that, as I mentioned before, with the Trade and Apprentice Representatives coming. If we can get 200 college representatives each year coming, I think we can do the same in these areas for our students, to make it available during their studies and lunches to meet with these people.
But I think even on that, you know, they were encouraging us to think outside the box, you know, I think of the biomedical world. What a great way for kids to get lab work experience when they're 18. That could be an apprenticeship. Yeah, maybe those kids are still going to college anyway, but what a great opportunity that would be for our 18-year-olds. You know, there's a lot of, I think, room for us to grow there and maybe get back to our local representatives on that. And then kind of the third area we talked about was like the community colleges and all the certificate programs and how that works. You know, they let us kind of know about, you know, there's a couple of new programs out there in terms of probably positioning our students for some of those certificate programs more clearly and finding the right connections for them. So I think that's another area we were thinking about as well. I'm not sure what else you want to add.
Yep, just last thing on, if you're referencing the New Hampshire Career Academy, they had referenced our seniors, those students that would be interested in leaving our high school their senior year and spending 12th grade and the first year after 12th grade in the community college setting, they would earn an industry certificate and be working towards an associate's degree through that program. The only drawback, if you want to call it that, would be we would lose them as a student. It would be a transfer from our high school to this new school. So I think some students would be reluctant to leave Landry High School, but I do, I would see some students that would really benefit from this, just knowing about it and that that's a way for them to expedite a career path. We certainly would want to support that. It's just that they would become a transfer student out of our school.
Yeah, so I don't think we're ready to recommend a certain direction, but I think give us a little bit more time to think about all these things in front of us and really hone in a little bit more. And I think, you know, it's one thing that Jason and I can kind of make a priority moving forward and then just figure out when you all want to come back to this conversation. Because, you know, I think there are opportunities out there for us and then we just kind of figure out if there's certain areas the board wants us to explore more than others.
So yeah, along the lines of thinking about individual lines versus a full program, I wonder, I know there's not a lot of money necessarily available for that, but if we did take the time to identify kind of needs that could be out there with the, you know, potential longer-term high school kind of rebuild, if we could think that into the plans, that might be a way to kind of, you know, if we do the work now, come at the lower costs, we're building this anyway type thing, let's keep this space in mind where we can now put our own lines of programming in there to kind of draw students in. And along those lines, thinking, you know, if we were, as we spec that out, it might be worth engaging, like Manchester in particular is a kind of a hotbed for STEM research and investment between the incubators that they have there for startups, between, you know, the Cayman Foundation and all they're doing with the US First and with the biomedical world. I know they're heavily investing with UNH Manchester to get laboratories up and running for, to your point, of biomedical research for growing, for being able to incubate, you know, human growth, growing human organs, replacement organs and things on those. A lot of kind of money is being sunk into that. Wondering if we were to kind of add facilities, not necessarily for that particular thing, but for that kind of tech-forward thinking, would there be money available from private industry to fund that, to get kids up to speed? Would that be able to be something maybe incorporated into our building project down the road? All of these things coming together, you know, with more of a five or 10-year plan in mind?
Sure. Yeah, I like, I like the sounds of Oliver to kind of dive in and maybe, you know, speak with Mr. Dolan and a couple of the representatives to maybe do some of the legwork with you where they brought it forward and that. If I can get you their contacts and that, and maybe you can send them on, you know, a project to get some information and bring it back to you.
Sure.
But I like the ideas. Are we limited to how many students can go to Alvern and Manchester?
Yeah, part of that tuition agreement, they have set spaces because they have a lot of sending schools that they're.
So does Pink, do we have the opportunity to send them to the other CTEs too?
Correct, yes. So if they're oversubscribed, we can then go to Pinkerton or another area.
Have we ever exceeded that or got to a point with the other two and not been able to send students to a CTE?
It's small numbers when it does happen.
Okay.
So I mean, one or two here or there.
Correct. And you said we have about 100 students right now that go? I'd love to see that number higher. So that's what my concern was, is if we had to start our own program, so we weren't denying any students the opportunity. So I just want to make sure they know the opportunities of other schools, you know, in our proximity to attend CTE. But I think the other opportunities with the internships and that, I think are just benefits to our students, another opportunity. And the more we can put out there, you know, the more, the better for everybody. So appreciate that.
Thank you.
Everybody good? All right, thank you. 10.4, 10.5 football?
Yeah.
Options for Hookset.
So Mr. Luzon reached out to me over the last couple of months and then put together a memo. Basically, there's one or two Hookset students which are in our Wildcats, so Wildcats program, kind of cadets. And Hookset right now does not have a league team that they're a part of, so the parents were asking if they could join the seventh and eighth grade team. And this is definitely a unique request. The way I looked at it, it's very much in line with what we would do with a homeschool student. If there is room, we could do it. If there's a fee associated, we could do it. I think that's what Mr. Luzon would be proposing. This would not be an opportunity that would happen for other towns because if there's, if the students from Derry, they have a club league to kind of go to. So I was okay with it. Jason was okay with it. Mr. Luzon was okay with it. So we're just making sure there's board consent and if there isn't, we can come back and answer questions. But this is really just one or two kids a year that this might apply to and they might end up being part of Landry High School one day anyway. You know, so I think we're doing our best to be accommodating, but we're just making sure the school board's okay with it.
So in a nutshell, when they were playing Wildcats and went through that system, they could be unboundaried, for lack of a better word, as they were affiliated here when we moved to the middle school model. They then needed to find a home because their middle school didn't offer that. We're in a league now. So again, it's a no-cut sport. They've had a lot of success and these particular students really don't have a home for youth football at the seventh and eighth grade level.
So basically, if we didn't have the high school team, we'd still have the seventh and eighth grade Wildcats and they'd be playing there anyways.
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
We just turned it into. We just turned it into a middle school team, so you need authority to allow them to play on the school team.
Correct.
These several students. You said it's a handful of students?
Yeah. And then, and Mr. Luzon's on his way. He's coming from an awards banquet with the state, but he could be here to answer any questions shortly, momentarily. I would say, though, that he built in the cost that it would, that we would bill those students coming to play because obviously they don't attend Lunedary Middle School, but if they're part of that program, we would cost that out, and they'd pay out of pocket for that.
Any questions?
Yeah, we've only got one other thing, so... Yeah, we'll leave it open for a minute. We'll go to the next thing in case Jimmy shows up.
Great, sure.
And then in case he wants to add to it.
Sure.
Okay. GPS tracking devices. So this is something that's been kind of playing out behind the scenes since January. I know we had some public comment on it in the past, but it wasn't entirely accurate. You know, in general, I think we understand the need for parents to have GPS devices for their students. The one device we ran into problems with was something called AngelSense. The reason why it's a problem is there's something on this that allows for active listening and one-way communication. So if the AngelSense devices in our classrooms, someone from outside the school could listen in to other people's kids, could listen in to the teacher, and without our consent. So when we first discovered this and kind of ran this by our lawyer, what we ran into is, New Hampshire has very clear and strong privacy laws. It's a two-party consent state, so that means if there's a device that can listen in to our classroom, our teachers need to provide consent, all the parents of all the students need to provide consent, the district need to provide consent. So we ran into that on top of, you know, federal privacy laws. So we were struggling with the best way to work with parents around the need for GPS device, this specific device, and some of the privacy concerns. Amanda Butcher, our school board member, did really wonderful work over a four- to six-week period working with the AngelSense company and our lawyers and really figuring things out. And what that resulted in is, if you kind of look in your board packet, the original deactivation agreement of these voice features that we got in January and February really did not pass the test with our lawyers. It did not give us any confidence that we would have a device that met the privacy requirements in the state. If you look at the new version of it that the AngelSense company gave to us in April, kind of towards the end of April, there's a lot more protections in place where the listening could not happen during the school day, and the parents would not be able to override that. The company would be in control, and then someone within our school system could be the only ones that could override that. So when we're looking at this entirely, you know, it's a sticky issue. It's hard. We're definitely trying to work with our families and figure this out, but I think from Amanda's hard work, I think there is a path forward. I think we want to share this new deactivation agreement with our lawyers, have them review it, make sure it passes all the legal requirements for New Hampshire privacy and federal privacy laws, and it's something that we can execute. And I'd also say, too, is I think what we're looking for is a good partnership with families. You know, I think we understand why these devices exist, but, you know, having a device in the classroom that can listen to other people's kids is something we want to avoid, or even our teachers, which would also be illegal in New Hampshire law. So I think we have a path forward, thanks to some hard work. So we're just looking for the board's consent to kind of talk with our lawyers more about it, and then get back to the families that are interested in this one specific device. I do not know if this does mean like a new policy is coming. It could be. I think that's one thing we'll have to kind of explore with our lawyers. This is a lot of complicated work that was first the Student Services Department, and I think Amanda did a good job helping us out over the last four to six weeks. Anything else you want to add?
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to add like a couple of things. I was happy to look into this device and this issue. It benefited me because I want to do what's best for our students here, but also I think I will come into contact with this professionally. And there's a lot of students with autism and other developmental disabilities that will bolt and run, and many of them lack communication skills, so that was something that was very near and dear to my heart and really important. So I was happy to speak with our lawyers and really get an understanding of the law before reaching out to the company, who I believe, based on the two separate forms, changed the policy probably because there are many states out there that are two-party consent. And I think when you look at this from a parental perspective, you'd absolutely understand why someone would want to use a device like that. But with the autism and the developmental disabilities comes also a lot of challenging behaviors. And through FERPA, all of our students, but our special education students, have a right to privacy. And through those laws, our staff also has a right to know if they're being recorded. And I think there was just a lot of details that needed to be sorted through, and it took a lot of time. So it was discouraging to me to hear some of the things that were circulating around, and just want to echo that if people have questions or concerns, we would have been happy to say that we were working on those things. And I think it's really easy to sit and wait for someone to make a mistake or kind of look at things from the outside and say how, you know, awful something is. But, you know, while you're sitting there, if you would be open to helping or coming to us and just getting some details surrounding it, we could make a lot faster progress. And I just wanted to mention that because a lot of hard work goes behind the scenes, personal time, things like that. And it's discouraging when the narrative isn't accurate. So we hope to do right by parents and our kids and be able to move forward with this. That would be kind of my recommendation after doing the homework, so.
Amanda, thank you for all your efforts on this. I know it's been a month and a half here going back and forth with documents and that, so... And I know it's for the good of the students and the parent security, so thank you so much.
Yeah, thanks.
Any other questions, Karen? Are we in a consensus to move forward with this, with the attorney to put the final blessing on it and make sure and work with these parents moving forward?
Yeah, definitely. Based on the marketing of this and with many of our students having these needs, I wouldn't be surprised if this is something that many people are going to want. So I think it would be definitely a good decision to put some parameters around it and just let people know. I don't think people would, most people have good intentions, right?
Yep.
You know, no one thinks they're going to go in and record someone else's kid. But we can't give everybody the benefit of the doubt because all it would take is one person to violate that confidentiality, and then we're looking at not only families losing their privacy, but we're looking at legal fees and things of that nature, so.
Yeah, and I don't think it would be reasonable to think that everyone understands New Hampshire's two-party state rule. And that they might inadvertently be breaking the law and then be held to account for it.
Right, definitely.
I think you're good at consensus.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll go right back to 10.5 now that Mr. Luzon has joined us.
So we presented the information. If you have some questions or if you wanted to add?
Quickly, before we start, so I was just at a banquet. Coach Salis was being given an award. We had six scholar athletes, football players that were being recognized, and they give out one National Football Foundation Scholarship a year. Last year, we were very fortunate to have Colby Ramshaw win it, and then I jetted out of there thinking it was no way we'd have another one, and Dylan Rizley this year won it. So I didn't get to congratulate him after, so I just wanted to, you know, hopefully. Somebody will tell him that he's being announced here, so.
Great job.
Thanks for working. So any questions on, do you want me to touch on?
You want to just do a quick overview, Jimmy, why this is going on?
Yeah, it's a unique situation. One reason is Hookset doesn't have a youth football program. So in a lot of cases, Hookset kids go to different towns, many of which come to, not many of which, but, you know, a couple per grade. And until last year, they could play all the way through eighth grade, but now that the seventh and eighth grade is under the school district's umbrella, it's been brought to my attention that they would then have to go play somewhere else for seventh and eighth grade, could potentially come back here for high school. And so they were, you know, bringing it to me to see if that was a possibility, that they'd be able to play here all the way through. And again, it's unique, and there's only a handful of kids. We're not looking to bring a whole bunch of kids, and I don't see why they would want to do that. But in certain situations, it makes sense for them or their family to play here. And so we were kind of asking for the blessing to allow them to play at seventh, eighth grade and go from there. In a nutshell.
And I expect these students are probably planning on attending Lunedary High School. Does that, you think that'll work out?
I would think so, those that are, you know, because they develop friendships through their teammates. And the majority of them, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Jimmy, are in Derry, playing in that system because ultimately, a lot of those students end up going to Pinkerton, I would have called, Middle School anyway. So this would be just really for the handful that have gone to Lunedary or Bow or they've, you know, exercised options as sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. They just don't have them now based on the change we made to go under the middle school model.
Correct, yeah. So they're playing in various towns. So Hookset kids are playing in various towns, which is, they can play wherever they want, but for the ones that are playing here, for whatever that reason is, most likely, they're going to probably go here. They're just asking to kind of continue throughout the middle school.
Any questions?
Yeah, just to clarify, part of the concern I had initially that I think has been alleviated has been due to the nature of the no-cut program in comparison to the other sports at LMS, where they have the L teams and the M teams. So as to not block out the Lunedary students from being eligible on the teams, this would not block them out. And also, what you mentioned in here is it being a very limited number of the students. We're talking less than a handful, as far as what you mentioned.
Yeah, I believe, Kevin might be able to correct me, it's like three in that are going to be in seventh grade. I don't know of any that are going to be in eighth. So, you know, I would say three to five, maybe, at most a year that we've seen, which is pretty consistent with how many come to play football here as freshmen. So, yeah, and the last thing I want to do is displace any Lunedary kid from playing football. We had so many kids last year, we ended up creating a third team, which is part of the reason we don't do any cuts. And the league allowed that to happen on a very short notice, so we were able to pretty much put 25 kids on a team and play in the seventh, eighth grade league.
But remember, I tried to compare it to the homeschool policy. If in the end it did create an issue with space, we wouldn't accept them, you know.
Correct.
Yeah, I'm going to abstain from the vote because Jimmy pointed out, I coached several of the kids last year. But to his point, yeah, there were only three on the team that were Hookset kids. I can definitely speak to the character. All good kids, all, you know, they stepped on the field, and they were all on team. So that was, you know, great to see. I think there was only one in the year before, which will be sixth grade this year, so it's not a huge population by any means that would be in there.
And the other point I would say is if Hookset did have football at this age level, then this wouldn't be, you know, wouldn't be presented in front of you. You know, they would wait until they got to high school, so they just don't happen to have it.
Okay, it's good.
Yeah, and I'm okay with it because we talked a little bit earlier, Jimmy, that where we made the change last year, it would still be, they'd still be playing for the Wildcats. Now that it's part of the school, you have to go through this format, so the more kids play, the better. And they'd be here anyway, so I'm good with it, so I think consensus, the board is, we're good.
Good. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, anything else from anyone before I close? Good. Ask group? Anybody? Dan? Anybody? Good? All right, I look for a motion to go into non-public session, requested under RSA 91A:3, Section 2B and C.
So moved.
Motion by Sarah?
Second.
Second by Amanda. Roll call vote. I'll step to my left, please.
Aye, Captain Gray.
Aye, Tim Porter.
Aye, Bob Slater.
Aye, Sarah Loveland.
Aye, Amanda Butcher.
Thank you, everyone.